I'd like to call this meeting of your Newark City Council order. Autumn, please call the roll.
Mr. Bub.
Here.
Mr. Fennell.
Here.
Ms. Hall. Mr. Harris.
Here.
Mr. Labutus.
Present.
Mr. Lang.
Present.
Mr. Marmee.
Present.
Mr. Rath.
Here.
Mr. Barker.
Here.
And Mr. Blake.
Here.
We have none here this evening. If you please rise for the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Blake has a, yes, invocationist.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's an honor to invite Pastor Bruce Wind up to the podium. Some of you may know Pastor Wind, pastor at Trinity Amy Church, right over here in our downtown area, near the post office. And so, his church has been active in our community for many, many, many years. And we just appreciate that he and his congregation, what they do in our city. And I just want to yield my chaplain abilities tonight to a real pastor, to be able to bless us all properly. So with that, I'll let you go ahead, Pastor Wind.
I'll have them say now.
We're long-winded here. So.
Before I start, if I could just say a quick, something real quick. First of all, I want to say thank you for this opportunity and the invite. And, Mr. President, for allowing me to stand before you all and to send our blessings for this, I can't say, wonderful city that I do serve in as a pastor and have enjoyed serving here. And on that note also, as Jeremy said, we are trying to do a lot for our community and for those we serve and try to help out in any way we can. And we do have, I have to put this plug in, we do have a Black History program that is coming up. And my beautiful, the First Lady of Trinity Amy Church, my lovely wife, Sister Sherri Lynn Nguyen, will pass out some flyers to the council members. And those who do not get one, please look us up on Trinity Amy Facebook page. If you don't have Facebook page, just catch one of us and we'll be glad to invite you and let you know what's going on in this wonderful city with us. So at this time now, with all heads bowed, Most gracious and heavenly Father, we thank thee for allowing us to be in your presence once again. Now, dear Lord, as we move forward, I ask that we have conscience of clear mind, so that we can make the right decisions of those that this council serves and for this community that we serve. Father God, I ask that you continue to give us strength, so we can help those in need, help those that are homeless, help those that are hungry, help those who are lost, and just help the community. Come together as one, working together to not only make the city of Newark a great city, but make them a fantastic city for all the surrounding counties and cities to see. In the name of Jesus, dear Lord, we give you the praise for the work that's already been done. And we just ask that you continue to give us strength to hold our heads high when we're in trouble, that we can lean on you and hold your hand, as we make those decisions that affect not one brother or sister, not one mother or child, but everyone, as we come together, to do things, to make repairs, to make the city safe, but overall, dear Lord, to serve you and all those that we represent in each ward and district. Give you the praise, the glory, and the honor. We thank you, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Wind. If you just want to hand those to Jeremy, we'll get them around here. Can you please join me in the pledge?
Our pledge is that we shall be specific by the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as all.
Next on the agenda this evening, we have caucus. That's a time for the council to discuss anything pertaining to the agenda. Do we have anything?
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmee.
I make a motion to excuse Ms. Hall.
Motion to excuse Ms. Hall.
Second.
Second by Mr. Blake. All favor seats, followed by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That passes. Anything else for caucus?
Mr. President.
Mr. Barker.
I will be abstaining from the vote on 19-38.
Okay. Anything else?
Please.
Okay. Next, we have the minutes of our January 21st, 2020 meeting. Motion to approve those.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Labutus.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lang. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That passes. We have three reports this evening from standing committees, one from finance, one from service, and one from personnel. Without objection, those will be received and filed. Also, under reports from city officials this evening, we have one from Barb Jobs, our city tax administrator. Income tax revenue reports for the period ending December 31st, 2019, and January 15th, 2020. Without objection, those will be received and filed. Tonight, under Communications, we have a public hearing. We're going to open this public hearing. Autumn, would you please read the public hearing?
Notice is hereby given that the Newark City Council shall at a later date to be determined and announced thereafter, take action upon ordinance number 19-38. Said ordinance accepts a proposed amendment to the zoning map attached to ordinance 08-33A, which would allow the changing of zoning classification of certain real property generally described as 595 Thornwood Drive, City of Newark, Ohio, Lincoln County, from that of GB, GI, GO, MFC, MFR districts to GI, General Industrial District.
This is a public hearing. This is your chance to speak either for or against this. This is your time before we vote. So if anyone would like to speak, please raise your hand. Just flat, come on up. Just give us your name and address, if you'd like to.
Rick Platt, 880 West Locust Street in Newark. Rise in support of the ordinance and the rezoning of the property. This is extraordinary piece of property, this large track with rail, with the utilities in place, and it represents an extraordinary opportunity to retain jobs in Newark, as well as create an opportunity for a major expansion in the future as well. So again, I urge to support the council.
Anyone else like to speak, for or against? Anyone for or against? One more time. Anyone for or against? Okay. We're going to close this public hearing. Autumn, would you please read 19-38?
Ordinance number 19-38 by Mr. Rath, Mr. Cos, Mr. Marmee, and Mr. Lang. An ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property generally described as 595 Thornwood Drive, City of Newark, Lincoln County, Ohio, from that of GB, General Business District, GI, General Industrial District, GO, General Office District, MFC, Multi-Family Condo District, and MFR, Multi-Family Residence District, as shown on the attached Exhibit A to GI, General Industrial District zoning code of the City of Newark, Ohio, in its entirety and declaring an emergency.
This has gone to planning commission and they have approved it.
Mr. President.
I prefer to read the end of this emergency. Mr. Rath.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt 19-38.
Second.
Motion adopted by Mr. Rath, second by Mr. Lang. Is there a discussion on 19-38?
Mr. President.
Mr. Rath.
I understand that there is a potential sale on the line, and it's a reason for the emergency clause of this. It makes sense to take that piece of property and change it all to one specific zoning. Planning Commission has approved it. Everybody's approved it. I think it just makes good sense. I encourage everybody else to support it.
Mr. Rath, anyone else? Autumn, please call the roll to vote.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Fennell.
Yes.
Ms. Hall. Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Labutus.
Yes.
Mr. Lang.
Yes.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Rath.
Yes.
Mr. Barker.
Abstained.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
We have eight yes and one abstention. So that passes. Next on the agenda this evening, we have comments from citizens. This is not a debate with council or a question and answer prayer with council. This is just your opportunity to be heard. Do we have anyone for this first section of citizens' comments? There is one other time after the legislation, so. Okay. We've gone to ordinances on the second reading, 19-44.
Ordinance 19-44 by Mr. Marmee and Mr. Rath. An ordinance amending the position, classification and position authorization tables of the City of Newark by abolishing the position of a count, excuse me, account clerk two for the Department of Public Service.
You've heard the second reading of 19-44. What is your wish, Mr. President?
I'm just a wish.
Mr. Bub?
I'm going to adopt ordinance 19-44.
Motion by Mr. Bub, second. Second by Mr. Marmee. Is there a discussion on 19-44? See none? Autumn, please call the roll to vote.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Fennell.
Yes.
Ms. Hall. Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Labutus.
Yes.
Mr. Lang.
Yes.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Rath.
Yes.
Mr. Barker.
Yes.
And Mr. Blake.
Yes.
19-44 passes nine zero. Next, we have ordinances on the first reading, 20-02.
Ordinance 20-02 by Mr. Rath and Mr. Marmee. An ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property generally described as 282 and 292 Wilson Street, City of Newark, Lincoln County, Ohio, from that of LC Limited Commercial District to Single Family Residence, RH High Density District zoning code of the City of Newark, Ohio.
20-02 will be referred to the planning commission and then it'll come back to us. Next on the first reading, 20-03.
Ordinance 20-03 by Mr. Marmee, Mr. Bub, Mr. Rath. It's an ordinance to provide for the issuance of not to exceed $1,125,000 of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying the cost of church-street-area improvements and repair, including electrical, sidewalk, street, and streetscape, and all necessary pertinences thereto, and declaring an emergency.
20-03 is on the first reading, but it is an emergency. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmee.
I make a motion to adopt ordinance 20-03.
Motion seconded by Mr. Marmee.
Second.
Second by Mr. Barker. Is there a discussion on 20-03? See none? Autumn, please call the roll to vote.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Fennell.
Yes.
Ms. Hall. Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Labutus.
Yes.
Mr. Lang.
Yes.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Rath.
Yes.
Mr. Barker.
Yes.
And Mr. Blake.
Yes.
20-03 passes nine zero. Next on the first reading, we have 20-04.
Ordinance 20-04 by Mr. Marmee and Mr. Rath. It's an ordinance to provide for the issuance of $965,000 of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying a portion of the city's cost and a portion of the property owner's cost in anticipation of the levy and collection of special assessments for the Horns Hill Road sanitary sewer project improvements and declaring an emergency.
20-04 is on its first reading, but it's also an emergency. What does your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmee.
I make a motion to adopt ordinance 20-04.
Motion adopted by Mr. Marmee.
Second.
Second by Mr. Barker. Is there a discussion on 20-04?
Mr. President, I will abstain from this. I'm sorry, I would have mentioned that in caucus. I didn't notice there was an emergency on this.
Okay. Mr. Bub's going to abstain. Anyone else? Please call the roll to vote.
Mr. Bub.
Abstained.
Mr. Fennell.
Yes.
Ms. Hall. Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Labutus.
Yes.
Mr. Lang.
Yes.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Rath.
Yes.
Mr. Barker.
Yes.
And Mr. Blake.
Yes.
We have eight yes and one abstention. Next on the first reading, actually, we're going to have 20-05, 06, 07, 08, and 09. They're all going to refer to the planning commission, but basically, they are all referring to the same general area property. So Autumn, would you like to go ahead and read that?
Sure. Ordinance 20-05, 20-06, 20-07, 20-08, and 20-09 by Mr. Marmee and Mr. Rath. Are ordinances changing the zoning classification of certain real property generally described as 807, 813, 819, and 825, North 21st Street, and parcel number 054-247-248-00.000, City of Newark, Lincoln County, Ohio, from that of GO, General Office District, to GB, General Business District zoning code of the City of Newark, Ohio.
These are all five, 20-05, 6, 7, 8, and 20-09 will be referred to the planning commission and then they will be back to us. Next, we have resolutions on the first reading, 20-01.
Resolution 20-01 by Mr. Marmee, Mr. Bub, and Mr. Rath. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
20-01 will be held to our next meeting, which will be February 18. Next, we have 20-02.
Resolution 20-02 by Mr. Marmee and Mr. Rath. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
20-02.
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmee.
I make a motion to waive the two-day re-earel on Resolution 20-02.
Motion to waive the two-day re-earel by Mr. Marmee.
Second.
Second by Mr. Barker. Mr. Marmee.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have some payouts that we have to get out and we have to expedite those. Plus, we have a couple of bills that we have to pay, so then we can proceed with some different things within the city. So those have to be expedited also.
Thank you, Mr. Marmee. Autumn, please call the roll to waive the two-day re-earel.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Fennell.
Yes.
Ms. Hall. Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Labutus.
Yes.
Mr. Lang.
Yes.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Rath.
Yes.
Mr. Barker.
Yes.
And Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Two-day re-earel has been waived, Mr. Marmee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I make a motion to adopt Resolution 20-02.
Motion adopted by Mr. Marmee.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lang. Any other discussion on 20-02? See none? Autumn, please call the roll to vote.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Fennell.
Yes.
Ms. Hall. Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Labutus.
Yes.
Mr. Lang.
Yes.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Rath.
Yes.
Mr. Barker.
Yes.
And Mr. Blake.
Yes.
20-02 passes nine zero. Finally, this evening, for our legislation on the first reading, we have 20-03.
Resolution 20-03 by Mr. Rath, Mr. Marmee. A resolution authorizing and directing the Director of Public Service to advertise for bids and enter into contract for certain essential supplies for various departments of the City of Newark, Ohio for 2020 and 2021.
And 20-03 will be held to our next meeting, which will be February 18. And that concludes the legislation this evening. Next on the agenda, we have a second opportunity for comments from citizens. Again, this is not a debate with council. This is just your opportunity to be heard. If you'd like to speak, please raise your hand. Ma'am? Yeah, I knew you had your hand up, right? Anyone else?
Well, I want to thank you for the opportunity to come.
Name and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's Beth Blaine Summit Street. And first off, I wanted to thank the city, and I wish the mayor was present, for the recent week or more of meetings for the AI conferences and just talking and the opportunity to get together with the other nonprofits and government agencies, just to share information that really helps. It's really helping our area, because we're finding some ways that we could coordinate further. And certainly, we want to honor the city and their participation in this, because, you know, we need one another, okay? The churches, we're doing our very best. But again, this government aspect is very, very necessary. And so, we want to thank you for participating. So, on that note, I also, as I was looking at the calendar, I realized that it's almost summer, and it would be a great time for a discussion on the sound ordinance. And I talked to Ms. D about it. I'm not speaking behind her back or anything. I truly want to honor her service. I mean, she's faithful, and we'll be praying for her as she goes through this time, so. But yeah, she knows I'm here, and so truly, I just want to honor everything that we'd spoken of, even in her absence. But, you know, there's a lot of things that can be thought about this ordinance. Our present ordinance is pretty functional. I mean, it's worked well for the baseball games and observance of national holidays. But as we know, the advent, the Roost on the River, changes things a little bit. And we need to really look at, as a community, addressing those scientific measurements or those scientific aspects that are indeed not included in our present sound ordinance. Because right now, we have A measurements, which takes care of a lot of the trouble and some of the noise factor. But base is measured differently. It's measured on a sea level. And to my knowledge, and I'm sorry, I apologize if I missed it while looking at the present ordinance, but I don't see that it's addressed. And it's one of those things that, you know, you really can't foresee, so. But here we are. And so, so now it's here, and I kind of feel like we're backpedaling a little bit, but it's not too late. And so, it's really important, though, while discussing this, to not overregulate all the things that are successful in our area. Those things that are not impacted by the sea base levels, the baseball games, you know, the fireworks, the community events that have been so necessary to bring that common unity or community to this area. And so, as we consider, discuss, and the discussions, there are some things not included that, again, that need to be civically addressed, such as the psychological, the physiological, the cognitive, and again, the community conditions that are impacted by this concert venue. We've been meeting as individuals within the South End since October, discussing this. And there are some very, some very basic things that can be addressed, and it's not that difficult, okay? One is duration, and certainly decibels, which are monitored within the A level, base, which is within the C level, and then the PPCC impact, which I just spoke about, the physiological and psychological conditions. I know it sounds like I'm minimizing it, but I'm truly not. And I know that it's work. I know that it is. And I understand that we're talking about money and we're talking about an investment. But we're also talking about our community and the investments that we of residents have made. And with summer coming, I do want to be mindful to the folks, the Roost on the River, because, you know, they're part of the community too, and I want them to be treated as fairly as possible. And however, though, without the foundation necessary to hold such an entity within a family residence, you know, it's a bit of a problem. So I would like to encourage, whenever discussions can begin as soon as possible, in fairness to everyone. You know, I've been getting consolation calls for a year. "Oh, I'm so sorry. You have to put up with that. Oh, I'm so sorry." Well, it is sad. You know, recently, in January, someone, I'm not saying they're an evil person or anything, but they took advantage of a situation and took the wiring from the square. And it impacted thousands of people, their experience. I mean, and the lights were gone. And again, with all the sympathy and due to the Roost on the River, because I really feel like they're kind of in a bad place. We are hurting in that same way. Our experience is hindered. Our quality of life is lessened. And because of the impact of that concert center, so. But I thank you for your time. And I thank you for those that came out. That meant a lot. That meant a lot to us, to see people and playing phone tag during the last concert. It did. And we really appreciate it. But we thank you for your help and your time as we come together to work on this. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Crawford's coming up. Two things. One, make sure citizens' comments, two reasons, one, I'm getting old, and two, I just got off a plane, so I cannot hear very well, so please speak up if you're ready. I would appreciate that. Mr. Crawford?
I don't have a problem with speaking up, but Daniel Crawford, 163 South Second Street. I know, right? Okay. But I haven't been here for a while. It's been a couple of months for a number of reasons. But in the timeframe that I've been gone, of course, a few new faces. First, I want to welcome Mr. Harris to City Council and Mr. Barker, City Council. And also, in that interim with me being gone, I'm glad that Mr. Cos is here. I wanted to thank him for his service, and before the end of the year, I missed his last council meeting. Speaking of, I also heard that, I guess this may be the last meeting for Ms. Klein, so the City Council Clerk, I want to thank you for your service as well. You were very professional in helping with my organization when we filed our citizens' initiative a couple of years ago. And that, I mean, that was, actually, almost four years ago. Gosh, time is just passing me by. But yeah, that was very helpful, and I appreciated that professionalism. You're always very kind and stuff, so you'll be definitely missed. So there's other things I want to talk about, but in the interest of time and as well as the old age of some, I'm joking, but I want to shorten my comments tonight. But I'll definitely shorten my comments tonight and just thank you.
Has anyone? Anyone else, your last shot? You didn't put your hand up, but I'm going to let you speak anyway.
Super good.
I try to be obedient. Mr. President, council members, before the meeting had started, I had gotten counsel member Jeremy's, can't talk now, ear, and one thing I just want to bring to your attention, since I've been pastoring this church downtown Newark, I've watched church-street grow and downtown grow. The only, I have one, I hate to say it's a complaint, but I am concerned that as this growth is continuing, 64 Church Street, East Church Street, Trinity Amy Church, I should have said that from the beginning, we watched everything grow around us. And recently, they have put down the electrical wiring and a large pole right by the church. My main concern is, and I'm bringing it to your attention, that I would appreciate when council or the city decides to do anything around the church that I be notified or one of my officers be notified, so we can be better prepared, as we have limited parking as it is. And if we had an event going on while they were tearing up the street, or if I had a funeral and they were doing work, I would have been with my hands tied behind my back. And I think it's only fair to my members, I can give them some explanation of what's going on, instead of being off guard. So I'm just bringing it to your attention, that anytime there's any work done, that it's explained to me why it's being done, because I never got an explanation why that specific spot was picked for the pole that Towers hired in his building almost, and all the electrical work done. And then comes Sunday, my members had to park different areas, and I have, I will say, a seizing congregation. And I just don't like them to always have to walk across the street. So I'm just bringing this to your attention. If someone can make me aware or make the church, leave a message with the church when something like that happens, I would greatly appreciate. So we can be involved. Even today, I have some of my church members here that are listening and trying to be involved, so I can be better informed to talk to my congregation, and once again, so we can be better served, the community, without being blindsided. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any city officials to say anything?[1658.02] As Mr. Crawford said, this is Ms. Klein's last meeting. She is moving on to a new opportunity for her. So you said you wouldn't cry, so I'm assuming. So I certainly will miss her, but we'll talk about that in a minute. Our award-winning auditor, Mr. Johnson.
I sort of feel your pain, Mr. Ellington, because as old as you are, I think I'm a little bit older.
Not by much.
I would like to thank Autumn for her service to the City of Newark and to the citizens and the help she's given me and my office over the years and the professionalism you've shown. I'm really sorry to see you leave, but I'd like to wish you the best in your new endeavor.
Thank you, Steve.
And Mr. Johnson. Our honorable law director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I mean no disrespect to Mr. Labutus or Mr. Blake when I say this, our regular chaplains, but it was a real pleasure having Pastor Wynn here tonight. I feel like I should sit up straighter and behave myself and try a little harder.
Actualizer.
I'd welcome you back any time Pastor. You raised the bar, and I appreciate that. I don't know about everybody else, but I'm not the least bit happy about Autumn leaving because I probably deal with her and my staff probably deals with her more than anybody. And we've grown to have a very productive, very good relationship with the many things that she has to do and that we have to do behind the scenes that you guys don't really see. So I suppose I should wish her the best in her new endeavors, but I'm not at all happy about it. And I'm not at all happy about having to train somebody to replace her because it's not going to be easy to do. So with that, I will pass.
Thank you. I said I wasn't going to cry between the two of you.
Thank you, Mr. Sassen. Mr. Bub.
Yeah, I need to call Personnel Committee meeting for two weeks and wish you the best, Autumn, in your future. And with that, I'll pass.
Mr. Fennell.
I'd also like to thank Pastor Wynn for coming and speaking. Those are beautiful words. And I look forward every year to your Black History Month program, so I will be there unless I catch whatever flu is going around. So if you can put in a prayer for me or something, I appreciate it. Autumn, I am... It's been a pleasure working with you. You've always been exceptional, and they're lucky to have you, and it is our loss. So thank you so much for everything you've done for us. And we're Facebook friends now, I hope so. With that, I will...
Thank you, Ms. Fennell. Ms. Harris.
Yeah. Autumn, I wish you the best. Thanks for getting me started and getting all my paperwork done and everything. And okay, everything looks out for you. Pastor Wynn, thank you for coming in. I want to remind everybody that this month is Black History Month. And I encourage you to look up some history. I post, I've been posting something every day on my Facebook page about someone who's invented something and done some wonderful things for all of us. So I encourage you to... And I hope they still teach black history in school. I don't know. They probably don't. But I, you know, I hope they teach a lot of things, you know, just not black history things, but, you know, other cultures because that's what makes America great because we're all different and we're all created by God. So, and with that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Mr. Labutus.
Thank you, Mr. President. Pastor Wynn, thank you for being here this evening. It was good to see you again. Appreciate the prayer. Mr. Sassen, no offense taken. Pastor Wynn did a fantastic job with the prayer. So I appreciate that. Also, Autumn, thank you for your service. I hadn't had the chance to serve with you a little over the past two years. You've been great to work with. Always been very professional, very helpful. I've always been there when I've had any questions. I appreciate that. Wish you all the best of luck in your future endeavors. With that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Labutus. Mr. Lang.
Yeah, Ms. Blaine, just to let you know, I had been talking with D. She's obviously not here tonight, but we do plan to get together and get some meetings together to talk to the Safety Director and our Law Director about how to restructure, write some better noise ordinances that are more enforceable, that can, you know, serve some of the issues that we've been having. So just wanted to let you know that is something we're working on. Pastor Wynn, thank you for coming. It's always a pleasure hearing you speak and hoping to make it out on the 23rd. Hoping to make it out there. Daniel, thanks for coming tonight and giving Don a hard time. That's always appreciated. And Autumn, thanks for all your time and good luck in your new role. That'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Lang. Mr. Marmee.
Oh, Don, can you hear me? I need to call Finance Committee.
Mr. Raff.
Finance Committee meeting. I too want to thank Pastor Wynn for coming in. I always appreciate the good invocations that I felt council members provide that you did a great job this evening. And you are welcome anytime. Thank you very much. I also want to wish Autumn good fortune. I don't believe in luck, so I think that you will have good fortune in your future. I want to thank you very much for all that you have done. Finance is definitely not something that's easy as far as keeping numbers together, last-minute changes, all of that. And I do appreciate you always, your willingness to work with me and anybody on this council, for that matter, and also getting me additional information. And I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for that. And I do wish you the best. And that'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Marmee. Mr. Raff.
Thank you. Pastor Wynn, I want to say thank you for coming out. Appreciate that. Ms. Blaine, I'm also, I've also done some research on the noise ordinances, and I'm looking forward to the discussion on that. I want to see where that goes. Definitely have some ideas on where that should go. And it's definitely something that we need to have addressed. Daniel, best comments ever. Wanted to say thank you to Mr. Ellington and to Mr. Johnson for being here with those guys here. Keeps the elderly jokes away from me. I'm also looking for a thousand. Finally, Autumn, thank you so much for everything that you've done. You've been an incredible asset to us. You will never be less. You will always be best. You'll always be best. She does that. That'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Raff. Mr. Barker.
Yes, Pastor Wynn, again, thank you very much. It was a pleasure to have you here this evening. Also want to thank my fellow council members that came out. Mayor, he was here and took a Groundhog breakfast last Friday night and trenched out in the beautiful weather at 5:00 in the morning. It was great. Not as good as you had, Don.
Sorry.
And again, Autumn, kudos to you. Thank you. I, my first week, I don't know what I would have done without you getting me straight on everything I needed to do. And with that, I will pass.
Thank you, Mr. Barker. Mr. Blake.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to address, you know, thank Ms. Blaine for her comments and thank Mr. Lang for his comments and wanting to see the issue discussed further. I know that these two have been talking some and whatever timeline or discussions go forward, I look forward to, to being open discussions and hopefully can move forward with some type of action there. But on another topic, I want you to put your Licking County Champions hat on because I must definitely want to publicly thank the Licking County Champions this week. I was contacted by a mother and her daughter. The mother's going through a divorce from an abusive husband, and we needed to find her shelter. And it was the Licking County Champions that I was able to reach out to and help in that regard to make sure that that mother and daughter weren't unsheltered and on our streets. So Beth, please tell Chris that I thank all the work that they did to make sure that that family was taken care of this past week. I want to thank all my council members for thinking Pastor Wynn because I guess I made a good decision inviting you in. So thank you for coming in, Pastor. And I do plan to invite other pastors. Many members may not know this, but typically, I go to my home church on the fourth Sunday, and I visit other congregations throughout the month in our community. And our community is rich with diversity within our people of faith. And so I plan to use my time to invite other pastors and to bless our city and to come as the people of believers. So just thank you for coming tonight. And I think Director Rhodes may be out in the hallway. I don't know if he's out there or not, but...
He is.
Okay, so the comment that you made regarding the pole outside the church, we probably want to grab Director Rhodes before you leave. That's who you probably want to talk to. But thank you again for coming. And Sherri Lynn, thank you for coming as well, First Lady. And I do agree with Jeff Harris. You know, I think that black history is American history, and I hope that whatever people can do to educate themselves and the contributions of African-Americans in our country, it truly makes all of us whole. And finally, it's just, I agree with Director Sassen. It's with a heavy heart that I have to make these comments to wish you the best, Autumn. Because I've grown to not only known you as a professional and the work that you've done and the service on behalf of the citizens of Newark